Hi, this is Praios and yeah today We will be again not have this dry of a stream like we have had the last two times Today I was able to play again and yeah seems like the break wasn't good for me because I feel like I played terrible And yeah I already made a video about a hand that I messed up so badly I'm really ashamed of this This will go online on my YouTube in a few days so if you're interested in that check it out Yeah I guess this would be helpful to a lot of people because Yeah this shows how important it is to plan ahead and Play well and take everything into consideration when playing deep and also shows where deep is a way more skillful game than playing for 100 BB only But yeah without further ado let's now jump into this hand here One is taken from Hold the Manager And yeah we got a Limpa in a min isolate from fish one and fish two I decided to vorbet although this is also this is only the size of a squeeze Not even bad And yeah first guy got out of the way and he called Flop is okayish top set but ten jack has a speed it's also very joy But when having the ten in hearts blocking the first straight also having a redraw to To a straight and also blocking the flush I feel it is okay to bet And yeah you should bet on ace highboards the majority of the time When being the pre-flop regressor and this is even more true in three word pots so yeah I'm very I'm fine with this bet it's half pot I guess that's also the preferred sizing and yeah now The trouble starts because he decides to re-raise our small we definitely cannot fold yet You have to see at least one more card And yeah this guy also looks very crazy so far He raised sixty percent versus flops he bets in three word pots in position And yeah He's also raising a lot in single raise pots And also does a lot of check raising out of position checker raising is always out of position I guess so Needless to add this yeah this is a small sample but yeah You see his general tendencies and yeah he's also very aggressive on every street so I feel like My hand is best and even if I'm behind there's no way getting away against this dude and yeah If he's bluffing we want to keep his range as wide as possible we don't want him to fold the flop with all his bluffs and semi-bluffs So we just call and yeah the plan is on a non-hard we definitely getting it in Maybe not on a ten but yeah on all other stuff I feel very confident to get it in Now the board got even more joy and yeah I still like my top set could raise a lot of stuff that is weaker than our hand For example middle set or bottom set he could also raise two pair in a flush draw which he might Continue to play aggressively he could raise a blocker with or without additional equity Yeah he obviously will raise the nuts but yeah I guess against a guy like this it's just unfortunate if you run into the nuts so I plan to check and depending on his sizing decide what to do if he bets that big this was pot My guess here the rake is not deducted yet yeah I decided that the best line to take is to shuffle in I mean We don't know which rivers are good for us I mean we know that a board pairing river will be great for us but If one of the flushes came come in or If a blank comes in Yeah thanks for the good critic Yeah we have to yeah we don't know where we at and so I decided to just get it in he might also be able to get away from his hand But he will most likely not be able to get away from his hand if we raise him now if he has any sort of draw like Flush draw flush draw and a gut short two pair so yeah I decided to raise it in obviously the session did not went that well I ran into the nuts Also quite nice hand to get involved with pre-flop min isolating bloody mitin Yeah I got insanely lucky hitting my full house on the river but yeah against his range I think my play was perfectly fine Yeah I mean against other guys This is much tougher but given his tendencies I think there's no way getting away and yeah I got lucky Happens so yeah moving on to the next hand we I think we also don't need to do any deeper analysis of this This is for me relatively clear what to do and yeah Let me know if you have another different opinion but yeah I think that's correct like I did Yeah yeah this is just a pre-flop spot and I was wondering if I should get involved but I think calling is fine I mean it should be So What happens here limp cannot We just ignore the limpa So it's raise call Yeah it can this ever be a squeeze I mean it could so But I guess a fold is not what we wanna do Ten eight eight king Just calling or squeezing okay the solver Actually likes a squeeze more but yeah this is not taking into consideration that there's also limpa but yeah This guy is also like playing eighty VP IP so we could just ignore him and put in the squeeze So yeah squeezing would be the way to go I think in-game I just called I mean just calling is also fine because you keep The same guy in and yeah that's something you Probably prefer So yeah it's close and yeah do whatever you want If you don't fold you did everything right Yeah seems I also Thought that this is a clear call but yeah solver says that that's a squeeze All these GTO wizards that Get into these ranges all the time might but not sure if anyone else is doing this squeeze here Oh that's also I think that's probably not that tough I mean the three bet should be correct but Once we hit a very shitty flop like this we probably just have to give up But let's get the confirmation From vision so it's a singles suited board queen six twos Hmm What is close to this one Queen seven three we could use instead Okay let's do it although now that's not changing much I also put in the incorrect stack size So queen seven three is what the board is And our hand checks always Just betting then we have the flush draw and the backdoor flush draw and in all other cases it's check yeah that's I mean probably no need to look this up And Back oops 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 messed up completely Yeah and I guess against a bet this also has to be a very easy fold So if we check and he That's Oh what I messed up again Messed up completely so that's now now we are talking let's do this again but yeah Should still be a check I guess No it is not the backdoor flush draw wants to bet if we block a flush card too With a flush blocker we bet one hundred percent of the time with flush draw and backdoor flush draw we Prefer betting but checks sometimes too Yeah but the backdoor flush draw again that is betting Flush draw interestingly does not bet and with nothing at all we check and yeah we have nothing at all so Checking seems to be okay and Yes it is big blind versus Button but Vision only has small blind versus button so we use this instead And you can also see on the screen Or are you just hearing my voice and looking into this from a Mobile device like Cell phone then it might be hard to see anything When you don't because you will have a very tiny tiny screen So yeah against a bet this should be a fold and it is so yeah not sure why I even looked this up Oh that's interesting Not sure if I should have bet turn I I thought that with a nut flush On a paired board there's a lot of value to be gained From weak opponent but not without folding a six or a flush but if you get check raised When you are in a world of pain or maybe not you could just fold Let's see what Should happen on the turn in a GTO universe We again don't have the correct positions but We can take button versus UDG instead this should also be fine The board is paired nine six six Yeah that's correct And Non-aggressor should not be aggressive that often and yeah we should bet thirty-three percent Is this a thirty-three percent bet I guess this was a very tiny flop bet Pot is really small is it so This probably is It's not a three word pot so it's a limp pot or something He limped and I raised or something yeah that's how big is a pot then when it's like ten And when I bet three and my sixteen yeah it's a limp pot Hi Limp pot so limp pot he check called the flop against my tiny bet and now he's check raising so I bet small He should be Check raising Not a big amount of the time I mean I didn't expect it this check raise to be ninety percent So For fun sake let's just look what his hands are what are three betting so most of the time Good stuff like trips or full house Some hands that block the full house and have additional equity in form of straight draws will raise two And what else Flush and straight draws that block the nine preferably also raise slot So yeah he but he didn't draw trace he was just calling turn is queen and hearts I mean in reality it was queen of gloves but we have to adjust to the boards vision is giving us And yeah He should have a decent leading range here of forty-four percent but he wasn't leading he checked And yeah I as a pre-verbal aggressor should not bet very often in this situation and never I should never use the Three quarter or whatever it is I did use although this is not the same situation as we put in here because yeah this is A limp pot but yeah That's the best alternative we got That's our hand And our hand should be checking unless We got a flush Not flush then we could Bet sometimes But looks like Even with the high flush although we bet the majority of the time So the bet probably is fine so let's use this sizing and once we get raised I guess in the GTO setting you want to call yeah But the potter stack ratio is a lot bigger than in our Sim and yeah we also play against the Recreational player that is probably not bluffing here I mean which bluffs do we put him on when he is check calling flop and now check raising turn He probably already has a full house he's most likely not turning a six into his bluff he probably would just call with it Same is true for flushes so yeah I guess Fold is somewhat reasonable Could also call to find out what he's doing on the river but I think in general against more passive Recreational players this should be a fold on the turn already No that's that's a nasty flop I guess we just want to check and fold Let's do this one in PLO trainer because here we got Raises from middle position And we don't have this option in vision so we call And the board is I hope we have this one king jack eight It's king jack nine So Yeah I mean it actually is king jack nine I just misspoke yeah Let's now see what our hand should do aces two backdoor flush draws I guess checking and folding is the way to go Yeah at least you check all the time this I got correct and Yeah let's see what we do if we face a bet Ace is four dos Yeah we fold always So looks like I played this one correct I mean I was pretty sure that but it is correct but Just want to make sure of I played a hand very very badly So you cannot see properly Yeah sorry for that I made the screen a bit bigger Not sure why I Included this hand because that's also a Pretty easy stack off But It's still I find it still interesting to see what bet sizing Is used here so let's get into the flop To find out what our bet sizing should be ten nine six is the board And it's middle position versus a big blind Though maybe it's not that clear because yeah we just have top two and a straight is already possible but with a gut shot two and backdoor flush draw This seems to be a clear stack off to me The board we need is not available So we have to use ten nine seven instead Is this better or worse for us I don't know So he checks what should be our bet sizing Ten jack king although I already know what our bet sizing is it's half pot Because on flush and straight draws I think we always bet half pot it might be that in vision sometimes where you want to bet Smaller Let's see if vision bets smaller so button Small blind versus button is fine and the board is We don't have it oh we have it That's good but I should make it rainbow And I Yeah so He should check at this amount of the time oh here he is but he's betting thirty-three percent the aggressor And Yeah the button or we in this case should bet fifty percent I think for Jane Nenders analyzes this would be Half pot as well so we use a bit different sizings Hey Praios you said you are getting bored playing poker in one of your YouTube videos but I see you are trying very hard studying playing Why is that yeah I'm getting a bit tired sometimes of playing poker but I love study studying poker and Getting into the theory so for me it's more fun to do the theory behind All this stuff than to sit at the tables and grind So what we are doing here is more fun to me than Playing on whatever side and trying to make money I mean I could make money with a stream too But yeah at the moment I don't make any money with my YouTube Which it's just yeah for fun and for entertainment purpose and yeah to make you guys better poker players But it's close I might be able to monetize soon on YouTube As I have more than eight hundred subscribers yet and with one K subscribers I could Monetize but I think Monetizing with one hundred subscribers probably will get you like one buck a month or something I think my YouTube videos down at least the ones I uploaded lately don't get many views these study sessions Seem to be only interesting for the biggest nerds and yeah not many people watch it but the people who get into it Watch it for a long time most of the time so these videos often have like Average watch times of like twenty minutes or something and yeah I didn't expect it many guys to stay In this video for that long because most of the time videos have like two minutes watch time and not twenty minutes so that's good So what do we write Yeah you get bored studying theory yeah most guys love playing and don't want to study for me it's like The other way around but I think for most people they like playing more You should find a good balance I mean if you want to take it seriously and make money So let's now get back into the hand it's check to us and we got nine king Jack ten And we should bet always And once we face a raise by the way the raise is way bigger than The one here we will pot and get it in I guess this would also be the same for the poker trainer So our hand is oh are we on a bit different board Also have a wrong hand typed in so it's jack ten king nine Yeah I'm a bit ashamed and Annoyed because yeah my session I think I I played bad I mean I'm not that bad especially one hand I messed up so badly it's a pity so I spewed away three hundred big blinds more or less and it was like very very bad played I I took the line worst possible and yeah Also was lucky to run into the nuts and yeah he destroyed me I also didn't knew what I was doing I played like a complete fish not considering any ranges or stuff I just look into my hand and was like oh that's That's a very strong hand I need to get a lot more money in the pot and I wasn't even sure what the pre-flop action was so you know this was This was a shame But yeah we can't change it now And yeah so he raises full pot this option is available on the sims from PLO trainer and I guess our hand still is way too strong to fold I mean the the gut shot helps our hand A ton yeah so you see we make like depending on the version of the hand we make like At least ten BB we could even make twenty-three BB so That's a very strong hand that's printing money we should not get scared of this straight here And yeah he's also the pre-flop three betters so we should not yeah we should not be scared too much here I think even a bit deeper we should not be scared at all and I wasn't I definitely got it in What is my question here So what happened here probably he raised I re-raise but that makes no sense because He raised he re-raised I could call something like that We could we could check if this is a cold call but probably not So let's see So This guy raises This guy re-raises Coming to us and we got king king six six Should we get involved my answer is no but seems like I got involved Most likely because I want to gamble or something Oh it's Closer when you think looks like yeah the solver is undecided he wants to Call sometimes a fold sometimes but he should never do this he should choose one action because one action should be better Yeah so but when you look when we look into the EV the EV for Folding seems to be better than the one of calling so I guess folding is a correct play but you probably could Call hands that also are bit connected like king king ten ten for example But you probably could call hands that also are bit connected like king, king, 10, 10, for example. Oh, king, king, 10, 10 is printing money. So king, king, 9, 9 probably is also fine. Yeah, king, king, 9, 9. Although with king, king, 9, 9 and king, king, 10, 10, he actually wants to cold forward. Although he isn't sure about that too, but yeah, looks like if you look into the EVs, that. Forwarding seems to be the way to go. I wonder, once we, once we four bet, what do we do against a shove? That's also interesting. I guess, though, what odds are we getting? So depending also on who is shoving, we get very good odds, right? So we probably are not folding anymore, right? So here is all in and yeah, I guess we are not folding with king, king, 10. Yeah, we lose a bunch of money, but with the money invested already, it's better to call than to fold. Yeah, I know. I mean, the king, king, 6, 6 is still folding even with, when it's double suited. But yeah, it seems like I was in gambling mode. Or maybe it could also be the case that he raised, he calls, I was three betting. But I also think that this free bet is not correct. So if he is raising, he is calling, then it's on me. King, king, 6, 6 never ever is good enough to make it three bet. Yeah, I said that I did not play the session well and yeah, this is a hand I should just call. And yeah, I might have, I might be the one who did the squeeze. And oh, that's actually, yeah, it's, it's, it's correct. Seems like when you are double suited. But then you are, when you are just single suited, you should do it as well. So wow, if that's a squeeze, then I played correctly. And that's also the most likely thing what happened because this guy has almost no three bet. So yeah, I might also, I mean, when I cold call, maybe I was thinking that he is having aces all the time. But I can stack aces when I make a set or something. So yeah, but this is a three bet. That's interesting. I did not thought that that's the case. But yeah, I mean, the solver is not completely decided yet. But when you look into the EVs, for me, it looks like. Three betting is a better player in calling. But yeah, this time probably after three bet, you will still fold if someone wants to be all in. Right? Okay, when double suited, although even when double suited, it looks like. What is going on here? 14% core, 86% fold, but the EV of the core is better than the one of the fold. So yeah, the ranges did not converge to an equilibrium yet. Normally you should take one action only and not have a mixed strategy. So the sims did not run long enough. But I suppose that this is probably very close. And if you are double suited, do whatever you want. And if you are single suited like I am. And if you face a four bet after squeezing, then you should go out of the way. Is this tough? I guess this probably is a fold in GTO world. But I think in this situation we face here, calling should be fine. Because yeah, two weaker opponents are in the hand. Yeah, when we can get involved with a weak holding too. I mean, this guy is playing 54% of hands and he's playing 87% of hands. And yeah, when you have marginal hand like this. And you can play against guys who have an even wider range. I guess then it's fine. I mean, we even get a discount in the big blind. Yeah, I mean, GTO it's a fold. But if you play against dudes like these two guys, then call should be okay. Yeah, and it looks like this is not even losing that much money. And yeah, the money we are losing against him probably is compensated when we make hands against these guys. And yeah, so I still like the call I made. But if you are up against regulars, this is not a call, but I knew that already. Single suited, double kings, you mean double pair of kings? Yeah, they are still folding if you face a four bet. Double suited kings, it's close. So you do whatever you want. But yeah, for me, it looked a bit closer to a call. But yeah, what do I know? Jane Nenders should run the sims longer. That's what I suggest. This is a three bet pot? Not necessarily. So he already called, we can see that. Maybe my. I guess I wanted to know if this is a continuation bet in GTO land. So let's find out what it is. This is a C bet in GTO land. Chat, you can also participate and tell me if you think that is a, if you think that this is a continuation bet or not. We have to change our hand a bit, not the hand, the flop. I guess it's fine. And. Yep. Ace, 10, queen, 4. So it's checked to us, I guess it's probably a continuation bet. But could be a check back to. I don't know. No, it's 50, 50. So. Let's gut shot flush draw. What? There is no flush draw, so no flush draw. Well, do we have a backdoor flush draw? No, we don't. No, we don't. Very hard to say. I mean, this, this patterns are very hard to decrypt always. So backdoor flush draw, backdoor flush draws want to bet more often. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do whatever you want. This is mixed depending on your staff. But if you have backdoor flush draws, you can bet more, more of the time than when you have none. Yeah, 75% is the sizing in single race pots usually unless it's paired or straight is possible. Or it's monocron on these lockdown boards, the sizing usually is smaller. But if none of the boards mentioned before are in, then it usually is 75%. And later streets, it could also be pot. Yeah. So this is close, you can check and you can bet. It's what we learned. That's the hand we already discussed earlier today. Yeah, I think against this guy, as I already said, there's no way for me getting away. But I have to keep this range as wide as possible. So just calling flop is a perfect plan. Yeah, and I just, I just called and on the turn it's getting more drawy. We avoided the hearts and yeah, we still have top set. He can play this way with hands that we beat, like two pair and flush draws. Gut shorts plus pair plus flush draw, two flush draws. Weaker sets. Locker with or without the straight or additional equity. So yeah, I guess there's no way out because this guy also showed a tendency to raise recklessly in three bet and in race pot. So yeah, against a guy like this, no way getting out. He had jack 10 in the example, but yeah, what can you do? Next one. I also got lucky on the river, so all fine. So this is a three bet pot against a very aggressive guy. Not aggressive, but loose, also quite aggressive. But so let's first find out what our plan is in GTO land. Jack, 7, 6. It's a tough one. Jack, 7, 6 is not available. So jack, 7, 5, I guess. Let's see what we should do. You can make your bets now. I'm not sure. You block no club. You block a pair though. You have a backdoor flush, right? Guess checking is the way to go. And our hand mainly checks. And if we decide to bet. We want to have the backdoor flush draw. Or we want to block at least the main straight draw or have blocker to it. I guess we fulfill, fulfill the second requirement. But we have a backdoor flush draw, but the backdoor flush draw should be ace size. So yeah, our hand is a check. Okay. And once we check, what is our reaction to different bet sizes? I guess against half pot, we probably call once. We check raise. Wow, look at this against half pot. Although we don't have a nut blocker. It looks like our hand is a call. Okay, and then he uses a full pot sizing, then probably more footing is going on. And our hand might also be folded. Let's see. All these nut flush draws wants to be all in. We can probably ignore these two combos on the bottom because this is 1 and 2%. Still some calling. Although our hand has backdoor diamonds. And so our hand is, this is here backdoor diamonds, but here it's backdoor spades. And our hand seems to be a call. So even against full pot, we would continue with a call. I guess against this dude, it might be the correct play to. To just bet yourself. I guess you probably will not get raised that light. And he has a way wider range than you would have, than you would expect. And you don't want to give free cards. You want to lose peels and then take it down on the turn or deny equity on the flop. Against a guy who is playing 88% of hands. Although here, I made a mistake. And you should not make this mistake too. Often people assume just because someone has 80 VP IP that this guy is very loose. But we don't look closely enough into the actual situation. Because our dude is limping a lot. And once he raises, his range is a lot stronger. And this is a case here too. So where a fish would play like 60%, but they raise them all against these guys. These, the, how I approach this first or how I wanted to approach it first is correct. But if he is splitting his range into two parts, one huge, weak, limping range and a way stronger. Range that comes in for raise, then this is more to a GTO spot actually. So yeah, this is closer to a GTO spot. So he has like, I think this is a guy that is reckless pre flop. So let's say he has like 10% to 33%. I excluded the top 10% because I think this guy is completely reckless pre flop. Yesterday, he got in 2, 2, 3, 3 rainbow against me for 250 BB. And yeah, I think today he got in like ace, queen, 10, 6, single suited. So I guess this is an assumption you can make. And yeah, let's now see how our aces do on this board. But yeah, okay, even against a weak range like this, we don't have a huge equity edge. So checking is probably the way to go. Although I don't mind a bet either, but yeah, checking, checking is fine too. Okay, moving on. Hi. Oh, this, this was a very tough one. I think it was, the action was like, he bets flop small, I call. He bets turn big, I call. He bets river pot and I puke and wonder if I beat anything. Is the call, you mean call this hand on the river or was it in another spot where you want to call? So yeah, this one is, I mean, what we beat is like air or busted clubs. But that's about it. I mean, it's also important to. Is this a zoom table or not? I guess it is. So let's try to locate this hand. And then I can bring it on the screen and we can start talking. Guess I have to, okay. Give me a moment to find this hand. Where the fuck is it? So I probably the pot was, I did not invest that much yet. That's sad. So he raised, I just called. Although re-raising could be okay against him too. Because he is, a UTG raise from him is like a button raise from somewhere else. So he is way to lose. But yeah, I flopped very good and he bets more. I just called, I mean, calling with this hand probably should be. calling with this hand probably should be, um, your standard, because if you are behind, you don't have many outs to improve. Um, the pair very hurts your hand, and yeah, so... Calling is fine, you also don't want to push out his bluffs. So I called. Turn is a good card, um, we assume to be still ahead, and he is like betting like crazy, has a turn aggression factor of seventy, and river still of fifty-one over two-hundred hand sample, and he bets full pot, I guess, on, on the turn already. Yeah, we definitely cannot fold yet, and I think he made a very quick river bet as well, and also for pot, so what should we do now? Is the question of the questions, um... I mean, he caught barrel through with nothing, I suppose. Uh, if he knows about call without a blocker. Uh... Do we have a blocker? What, what do you mean with blocker in this board? I guess an eight is a blocker to full house. Club blocker. Ah, okay, yeah. Not sure about it, so... I'm very unsure what I should do here. Uh, let's first put in the board and try to assume, make some assumptions about this opponent, um... Six diamond, ten diamond. So he bets every street where we showed strength already on the flop and on the turn. I think his timing was also like, he was betting very fast, so this scared me a bit more, as if he would have fought a bit and then fired the river. But maybe he also did it in an attempt to look strong, so... We don't know. Yeah, that's generally the case when you review hands that you found tough, then you most of the time have tough spots, and it's very hard to tell what you should do, um... So even the straights got there, but let's be honest, he probably does not have a straight, because who is betting straight, full pot on the river, where the board is paired, and where your opponent called two times already, so I guess you can probably rule out a straight here. So all is king spades, king hearts, jack, clubs, eight hearts. Uh, his range is very wide, he is a raise first in from middle position, effective versus middle position from, for, of fifty-eight percent, so he has a wide range. Uh... What do you think guys like this use blockers to make a bluff? Like queen six, queen ten, six-ten? So they block the full house, and yeah, they just go for it? I mean, they could. But yeah, queen, queen six can, but why should queen six bet the turn? I mean, he's very aggressive, so this probably could be the case. Queen ten, he might assume, but he has short on value, so he might not bet turn with uh, queen ten, so let's not put queen ten in there, let's just put queen six in there, and can he arrive on the river, holding six-ten somehow? So six-ten, so but he bet turns as well, so six-ten, he needs to have clubs with it. How else can he arrive on the road with six-ten? So he has like seven... six, five, ten. So he had a pair and a straight draw on the turn, and bricked on the river, uh, he has counterfired two pairs, which is not turning into a bluff. Uh... I think that's probably reasonable. Let's also add like all ace-high flush draws, and now add all boats. Queen, queen, six-six, I mean, just, he's just betting flop reckless, and then might have turned something. He could also turn the ten-ten set on the river. Let's turn the river. Okay, um, yeah. This was not the right impression, so he could have rivered the set of tens too, but in order to have tens, needs some backup, I guess, um... So what tens bet? The flop and bet the turn. Uh, tens would have clubs. Tens would include an eight. Tens that uh, have a straight draw, I guess. Ten-ten, so he needs a check. Or nine. Or seven. That's already very wide, but he's also an aggressive player, um... He could have... Did I add queens already? Add queen, six, and tens, ten-eight, ten-eight? Yeah, okay, uh, ace, eight? Ace eight is betting river, yes or no? I think we more likely know. So eight queen, queen ten. Is eight-six betting that aggressive? Let's say yes. And yeah, let's see how we do against this. So against this, we would have a clear call. If he's just bluffing, busted nut flush draw, when he also has a pair with it, so a queen six or ten. Then it's... Why is it now, why is my equity now increasing? He... What? I don't understand. This is... I don't understand, guys. Hmm. Maybe this is because... I'm not sure, this could be because if I add the cards I did, then it's less likely that he can has, has us beat, because when he has two more other cards, and yeah, one card already was, one more card was bad. So, could, um... Remove some of the things, but it seemed too aggressive. What about this? What about if you just say he is not bluffing with his busted nut flush draw anymore? But yeah, if he is as aggressive as we assume, then seems like it's very hard for us to fold. Why is it that hard? What if he not, if he's not using queen six anymore? So queen six is like a very important thing. Uh, this is probably not that many combos. Eight queen. Eight queen is a full house? A queen ten probably not bad. Wow, queen ten, so queen ten probably is the main thing. Yeah, if he's not bluffing with queen ten, because queen ten has a small amount of short on value, and he's just bluffing with queen six, we would have barely enough equity against the range, we assumed. So yeah, this comes down to the assumptions we make, and yeah. So the more reckless we assume he is, the the easier it's, we could call. But yeah, if we just remove, like, if we say like, oh, he could, queen six, he somehow assumes that he has short on value, because top pair and stuff, then he could drop to fourteen percent only, and against the pot size, we need forty-three percent in order to be profitable, so this is a close one. Hmm, yeah, against crazy player like him, I don't mind the call, but against most other reasonable guys, I think that's a fault, because, let's be honest, even if you got trips, you don't beat much anymore. Yeah, it could be, but he is just recklessly barreling with all sort of bullshit, and then we have insane equity. But yeah, also keep in mind, we only got two-hundred hands of him, so we don't know how, um... This is not, um, the sample is not big enough to judge already, but we, yeah, we have some... We see some tendencies, but it's not put in stone yet. And yeah, also, if I remember correctly, his size, he also bet very quickly on every street, so it was like, as he has no decision at all. And yeah, often recreational players at least think at one, at any point about it, and don't just pot, yeah. This way, often just do it, at least in my experience, when they got a hand where they have not, nothing to think about, like queens, for example, where they are just, okay, I need to get a lot of money. Although this, you also have to make a distinction between some dark guys and some others, because some also fake time bank to make it look like we got decisions, so yeah, not sure what to do here. It highly depends on your opponent and his tendencies, and yeah, I have no idea honestly, if I should call or not. Even after this analysis, I'm still unsure. Hmm, so here the question is, should we open raise this hand? You can make your bets, let me know, but you have to be quick, because soon I will put it in here. Uh, my guess is, we probably could open raise two cards, or a well-connected, double suited, seems fine, yeah. It's marginal, but it's an open. Yeah, you are wrong. Yeah, I think this becomes an even better open, uh, with eighty-seven percent VIP guy, so someone who plays almost every hand in the big blind, and on the button also a very loose guy is who we want to get into a pot with. Yeah, this was, this was a hand I completely messed up, and yeah, probably I should have just lost like hundred BB in this end, or I could have put myself into a spot where I would have lost a lot less, or where I at least, where I would have been up against a range where it's not complete top heavy, but yeah, I completely missed, messed up this end, but yeah, I will talk about this in another video, I already made it for that, it will probably go on in a few days. Oh, that's, that's, that's a tough one too, um... Yeah, I'm not sure if I can call here, or may, can I, I think shoving makes no sense, uh... This is close. Let's see, what, I guess probably it's a call, but I don't like it. Yeah, we should call. Yeah, it, it is a call. If I remember correctly, he had some bullshit too, but his bullshit on the flop was a little bit better than mine, and yeah, he his hand also hold. So he had, did not have aces, um, if my memories are correct. Hmm, I guess, uh, it's very hard to get away with this end. I'm not even sure if I should play pre-flop, but probably yes, against the button open. I guess on a board, that draw heavy, it's very hard to get away. And we also have a redraw in case he has four-six. But it's definitely scary when you, what's... It's also, what was the pre-flop action? Hmm, let's find out, is this zoom? It's probably non-zoom. So... Hmm. So... Okay, it was a three-way pot. A bad flop with two pair in the gut shot, and a backdoor flush draw. He just calls, yeah, on the turn. I made my hand, and yeah, just trying to extract more value. Uh, yeah, this situation is not available on this one, so we just have to do uh, single raise port, button with a big blind. Yeah, and unfortunately, no sims with three-way pots, this would be very interesting, but yeah. Unfortunately, this is not available yet, not sure if it will come. So the ball is eight-two-five. Why the fuck did I click the nine, um... That's not cool. That's not cool either. Uh... 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 Hmm, we only got situations that don't quite match what we want to have here, uh... Six-four. Hey. Two-three. Uh, okay, let's just take this, I mean, we will have the same ball on the turn, but yeah, the flop situation is different now. So let's make it ace So we should check. And if he bets, we should call, makes sense, I mean, our hand isn't the strongest, and yeah, we don't want to bloat the pot. Although, look at this, um, let's go, oh, that's the draw, uh, one one more time back, we could lead some, and what are our leads? Uh, the ones with backdoor flush draws sometimes. So let's, let's make it similar to So let's, let's make it similar to the hand we were in, so we lead it, he called. Now, the turn is the five and spades. What are we supposed to do now? We are supposed to bet a lot with straight. Yeah, so we bet, now something very surprising happens, we get raised. Guess we just first pump, get it in, most likely with all our hands, so yeah, no, no folding anymore. Uh, seems that we have a small amount of calling going on, but yeah, seems like we can simplify our strategy to just get it in. I mean, we can play against many hands that we beat. Four-six is less likely than ace-four-two, so we could be up against the same straight, but we have a redraw. We could be up against the double flush draw. We could be up against the set that is, is thinking that it has to does it, might think, that it has to protect the sand because the board is extremely dry with two flush draws out. And yeah, he might just think that it's unlikely that he made, that we made a straight and yeah, maybe he assumes that the low straight falls, although I can't imagine that someone is assuming this. So yeah, I guess he could be getting way out of line, trying to protect another mate hand. Because the board got that draw. And yeah, he could have the same hand without a redraw. Yeah, and obviously we could run into four-six, but yeah, I guess that's unfortunate and we have some backup. And yeah, in this situation, even without a flush draw, we get it in, as you can see, so my play was probably correct. By the way, he was very weak and had a hand, he should not play this way, he only had eight-five. So that was quite ambitious. Oh yeah, this guy, anyone knows this dude, he is a complete piece of shit, scum. I made this screenshot to report him to stars, not sure if this worked out. No, he is not folding with pre, because if he is folding this pre, then he would not be able to put the hand in, so yeah, the hand is fine. This guy buttoned me heute today, so I wanted to get on the waiting list and in order to get on a waiting list, you have to yeah, play actively on a table and yeah, there was only one other table with this guy, so I had to, was like, okay, I don't necessarily want to play heads up against the regular, but then I was okay. But I need to get on this waiting list, so yeah, whatever, let's play him and yeah, most likely he will have no balls anyways and give up very shortly afterwards. We start playing or he will not play at all, so I sit with him and yeah, he had the small blind, so he posted. Yeah, and yeah, we played one hand and then he said out, so he buttoned me and that is very unethical, unethical and also very unfair, if you don't know about this. If you only play the button all the time. Yeah, okay, if you would play heads up with only buttons, you would have an insane win rate. I would play anyone in the world with just having to play the button, so this is extremely unfair. And it's also prohibited and not allowed due to poker stars rules, but yeah, he just played the button and yeah, I even said to him in chat, hey man, what the fuck are you doing? I will report you, stop it, give me at least my button back. And he just said nothing, he waited like five more minutes and then left the table. So very annoyed and then I got into the chat because poker stars now has no email support anymore and you have to talk to people in chat who have no clue. And yeah, there's also, you can choose between different options like withdrawal or deposit or whatever. And the one closest to it was, what was it, chat, bad behavior in chat or something, so I get in there and I said, yeah, a guy was buttoning me. And when he, when she was like, okay, what did he say to you, then when I was, no, he didn't say anything to me. I just took the thing that is closest to the thing I want to report and this seemed closest to me. So this guy buttoned me and she was like, what the fuck is this? What are you talking about? And I was like, dude, you are support for poker, so why the fuck do you don't know what buttoning is? And yeah, so I had to explain first what that is. And yeah, when she said that she will give it to the relevant department and something might happen, but they will not come back to me and tell me what they did, I guess. Um, if she didn't got what I was talking about, she might just have said that and nothing will happen at all. And yeah, I think the most no, I didn't time you out. Uh, I, yeah, I did not time you out. I think the most likely thing that will happen if she actually reported him is that he will just receive a warning. But yeah, I hope that in the future here at least will not do this behavior again, because this is very annoying and very unfair. So moving on. Oh, let's, I wonder if this is correct, but I mean, it can't be too bad, we have an open end straight run over pair, so. Let's see, I guess GTO solution might be to just call, but that's also annoying. Do we have fifty BB solutions here? I'm not sure, let's find out. Because here we can put in, although here we can put in the the right positions too, so let's go with vision, so it's single suited board, nine, seven-three. Okay, I click on the wrong one, here, nine-seven-three, we got the exact board, could also change suits to, no. Okay, I messed up, clicked the wrong button, so it is cut off versus button. Nine-seven-three. And how do we change suits? Okay, we can't. But yeah, here is a brief aggressive, he decided to bet small, so this sizing is also GTO, please envision and I should not port that often. Let's see, what hand classes we should re-raise with, which is also very interesting. Because yeah, I don't train very much with fifty BB sizing, so let's see. No pair is re-raising sometimes. Flush draw, straight draw, yeah, flush draw and straight draw, it's a good re-raise, two pair. Good two pairs also a good re-raise and most of the time top two will be used. Uh, over pairs re-raise sometimes, no draw, okay, but it's also not re-raising. Over pairs with flush draw likes to raise. So seems probably our hand is too loose to re-raise with, according to GTO, but I still like it. You should not, oh, our hand is not allowed to be in the mix pre-flop, yes, it seems. So we, let's see, as the solutions differ a bit between these two, maybe we are allowed to have our hand in the other solver, but I guess not. And then the GTO will no, no help to us. Nine-seven-three, nine-seven-three. Okay. So he also, the bad sizing. They use different bet sizes, half pot in vision and two farts here. The position should use half pot only, let's check here, what sizing imposition uses. Inposition uses also half pot. Okay, okay. Jack, jack, six-eight, do we, are we allowed to have it? Look at this, Jane and this allows this hand, so yeah, and we do some re-raising with it. But yeah, I guess calling is a preferred option. Let's see how much worth it is to re-raise. Why is it not popping up? There should be stuff popping up and I stopped to hide zero percent frequencies. Okay, for some reason this is not working, but yeah, I think this cannot be too bad, I mean, this guy is loser when he should be. And yeah, we got an over pair and an open end straight draw, we can dominate other straight draws. He might get it into light, we have an enormous amount of full equity, I still like my raise, especially against recreational player. And yeah, I mean, I can't even think about a hand that's crushing us. I mean, what is crushing us? Like aces with the same straight draw, but yeah, not, not many hands crush us. I mean, we often have like thirty percent, if he has like a very good hand, a set for example. And yeah, against most other stuff, if he has, he needs to have a two-way hand in order to crush us hard. So if he has a nut flush draw, he also needs to beat our mate hand, so he has to have a nut flush draw plus two pair or a nut flush draw and an over pair. When we are in a bad spot, but yeah, I guess this should be fine. Hmm, yeah, again, I didn't time you out. So let's move on to the next one. Uh, is this a three-way pot? Probably, oh, that's twenty-seven in the pot. Twenty-seven in the pot. Twenty-seven. Then it is probably like raise, re-raise, or did I do the re-raising? He did the re-raising, I did a very loose pre-flop call. I mean, seems like I should not have called the three bet in the first place. But the pots also seems a bit big. Might be that this guy made a small squeeze and then we both called, something like this. Well, no, no, what I'm talking about, this is already the turn, so. Which limit does this is, hard to say which limit it is. Let's zoom, so yeah, ha. Probable, I open raise, he calls, he calls, nine hundred, nine, it's like ten point five BB. Then I bet. So when I bet three quarters, I guess I was betting flop three quarters in a three-way pot, he called and then this turn came and he is now betting half pot. Is this reasonable? I guess so. Should I call? I guess so too, but yeah. Should I have bet in the first place? I mean, I feel probably can't blame me. Should I bet the turn too? I have no idea. This sucks. Probably should not have bet on the flop. Let's do this one. Singles you flop, hundred BB, I mean, that's not exactly the situation, but let's do something. Not, it's not really close to it, but reasonably close, so. If we now have ace, king, jack, duce. What should we do? So it's a mix between betting and checking. If we have the flush blocker, we like fifty-fifty betting and checking. Um, my flush blocker is yeah, like this, all of, close to it, so yeah, it seems like it is okay to bet. But yeah, not sure if that's still true with another guy into the pot, but probably it is. Because this guy is also like crazy loose and yeah, we just want to take it down. Uh, now it's seven diamonds. What should we do now? I've guessed, he probably wants to bet again, right? No, he's not betting again. This is not betting again often. So yeah, checking is correct. And when we face a bet. We want to fold, so yeah, then this probably is a fold too, because when this was a three-way pot. Then he needs a way stronger calling range on the flop and yeah, then this is a fold. Already in a heads-up pot, then this should be a fold in a three-way pot for sure. But yeah, the sizings are not the same. Top pair sometimes continues. Uh, no, it not really. Yeah, seems like we should fold. Although I also don't mind to see it river against this sizing. We can still make a ten, we can, the king often might also give us a best hand or a jack. He could be drawing. And he could bet the same or similar hand as well. If he has something like ace-four. When we at least got some equity. And against flush draws, we are often ahead. But yeah, we will have some very tough river decisions. Yeah, GTO probably would fold, but yeah, I think depending on his tendencies, when he likes to bet these situations, you can definitely call and then make some tough river decisions. Oh, this was so annoying. Oh, this, I need to look into this. The solver, so, um. I also wonder if my bad sizing was correct, so I three-bet him, he calls. Then on the flop, I bet full pot, he calls and on the turn he dongs the rest of the money in. Eight-four duce, oh, you have lost two, eight-four-three, okay, let's take this one instead. Let's also make it rainbow because it was rainbow. Let's also make it rainbow because it was rainbow. Eight-four-three. So he should check always, which he did. And our correct sizing if we bet this pot. Um, ace, ace, ten, queen. No draw, kind straight draw, no straight draw, no flush draw. Uh, we got a backdoor flush draw. Backdoor flush draw. Yeah, looks like our hand often wants to pot. So yeah, definitely not a big mistake to pot here or probably the correct play. Hmm, yeah. What is, he should, he called some, so let's see what. Although let's, let's look into all the hands. He continues with and what he should raise and what he should call with. Because I find this interesting, but okay, here is the button. I think it was not showing up before that. So, okay, my bet, need to remove the hand. Now, we, it would take some time. But then we will see the hand categories he is raising and calling with. Overpair, backdoor, nut flush draw, gut shot. Okay, this seems ambitious, to be honest. So you should go all-in with ace-nine-nine deuce. Or with ace-five, queen, queen. Ace, jack, jack, five. Ace, queen, queen, five. Okay, some. Some stuff that, with which I not necessarily agree. Yeah, looks like that. Hmm, bottom pair, backdoor, nut flush draw, open and straight draw. Bottom pair, we got a nut flush. Mid pair, two backdoor flush draws, open and straight draw. Okay, with, with an open end, our hand becomes way stronger. And if we have no pair in hand, we also got a lot more outs against hands like aces. Four, five, six, seven. Okay, that's, that's where we sense us, us very strong. I agree with these all-ins. Hmm. Bottom pair, two backdoor flush draws, yes, so all these non-nutty draw type stuff. That beats the re-raising range hard or has good equity against the re-raising range. So what is calling? Set, sometimes low play. Overpair and gut shots, not really, not do much low playing. Bottom two, what, what, what? Uh, visa, mid pair, two backdoor flush draws, gut shot. Bottom pair, two backdoor flush draws, gut shot. So with an open end, we want to be all-in with a gut shot, we want to just call. Bottom pair, two backdoor flush draws, mid pair, two backdoor flush draws. Top pair, backdoor flush draw. Bottom pair, backdoor flush draw, okay. So marginal hands that don't think that they have full equity. But might pick up some full equity on the turn, uh, just call. So seven spades. Yeah. This is also what happened, he all of a sudden. It seems to be a very good card for him to dunk. Yeah, it was also very scary for me. So yeah, he is now all-in and we should not fold much. Because he could have picked up a flush draw. He could still be not having anything, right? Yeah, imposition first check call pot. Yeah, we are not folding much. Are we folding ace, ace, ten, queen? No, we should call. Even with just an overpair. Yeah, I also made the crying call and he had some. Stuff, I think it was like queen, four, three, something, so before. Only four, that also picked up a flush draw. So yeah, but I wasn't, not, was no great favorite, just like fifty-seven percent or something, but I think I hold. Ah, yeah, that's another three-way pot, I think. So yeah, three reports, he. Hmm, it's fifty BB. Yeah, it's between fifteen and one hundred, let's just stick to one hundred BB and make this more blind versus button. The board is singles suited, the board is five, six, five-three. And he was betting full pot. That's not, not an option in GTO world, so he was betting thirty-three percent. Yeah, when I definitely should call my hand, which is what I did. Now this card rolls off. And there is no pot option. Come on, guys. So he pots, warning, the solver takes this line less than one percent. Yeah, now, ten, jack, deuce, ace. Yeah, so I should fold. And I did this, although I'm not sure this was correct. But yeah, I mean, could be up against straight already. He just priced me out, um. Think it was a flop check raise and. Then he bombed the turn as well. I wonder if I should have got it in on the flop already, maybe. Because now I have a very, um, tough spot. So this is small blind versus BB. What is king, ten, four? Okay, this one is fine too. Why is this wrong again? King, ten, four, three, okay. Uh, we have queen, queen, ace, nine. And I messed up, right? Yeah, I messed up, uh, okay, restart. Okay, now we finally got it correct. And it is queen, queen, ace, nine. So he checks, we have queen, queen, ace, nine. And we should, no pair, not flush blocker, gut shot. Uh, we have the nut flush draw and gut shot, so this is allowed to bet. And if we get raised, what do we do? I guess probably ship it in. No, we don't ship it in, we just call. Turn is this. Oh, wow, sorry, not this. Uh. We have difference suits in, in vision. Need to keep this in mind. So call and it's this. And he wants to be crazy still. Uh, can't, unfortunately, I can't put in the full pot size bet here. Hmm, yeah, seems against the smaller sizing, it's closer to a call. Uh, only a few combinations are folding. But yeah, I, I folded, giving him credit. But yeah, I think against some random dudes with crazy stats, probably you should not call on the flop. Just get it in, um. You can't do that badly. Or did I get it in on the turn? I don't remember, I think I folded. Uh, although we just have like pot size left. Yeah, I think we should have got it in on the flop. Do not have these tough decisions to make. Uh, especially against guys like this and with like annoying stack sizes behind. I also, if I fold it, um, I probably assume that I had at least as much money as he did. But as you can see, I have only like pot size left. And I think in this case, call is correct. But I said, I played this session not great. And this was, yeah, let's see if this is. Okay, in GTO world, um, so. I raise, he re-raise, I re-raise. Oh, no, that's, uh, suck. Whoop, fold, fold. And I re-raised this. Not sure if this hand is qualified, but it might. Uh, I made it a bit better than it actually is. So this is hand, uh, so that's, that hand is not qualified. Is the hand with a five qualified? No, it's, oh, what did I do? I messed up, so he calls and. Um, the board is queen, eight, deuce. So it's queen, eight, four instead, I guess. And we download and now we will see if our hand is qualified. Let's check, yeah, gleich. No, it's not qualified. Okay, let's say I have this one. And yeah, it is qualif, it's almost qualified. Um, yeah, I think against this dude, it is probably okay to re-race pre-flop. Because yeah, he's, he's loser when GTO. And yeah, I got in like GTO suggests. He calls with like an eight and wins. Hmm, this is probably not a defend. I have to guess. So raise, re-raise, fold, fold, download, king, king, queen, four. King, king, queen, four. Um, it, yeah, it's, it's always unsure if you should defend singles suited. But looks, yeah, probably, yeah, on the edge. And I decided in this spot to fold. Yeah, this was like insanely annoying, what happened here. Uh. Can I call this river? I think I was betting flop big, betting turn small. And now checking to him on the river and he bets small. I mean, the price I'm getting is just very good. Can he have, can he have a king high flush? Maybe. Uh, can he be bluffing? It's hard to be bluffing. Could bet a king high flush maybe with this sizing. So yeah, I made the crying call, but. Yeah, folding seemed odd, given, given the sizing. I mean, it would be very exploitable. Although it's very hard to find bluffs here, to be honest. Just value that we could beat and that might already be enough. Um, is this a three-bet? Forward, re-raise. No, no, they're not re-raising yet. Just want to see if this is a re-raise. King, ten, seven, nine. King, ten, seven, nine. Yep, although, yeah, looks like it's a re-raise. What's happened here? Uh. Not sure. One moment. Bist du jetzt los? Wie du gehst hier? Ja, dann gib mir, ich bin gleich da. Ich bin gleich da. Okay, uh, unfortunately need to go. Um, might do the last three hands later, but not sure. Um, I hope you enjoyed it. Thanks for watching, bye. Okay, as promised, we are back online and yeah. Getting into the last three hands, um. Okay, this was a three-bet, he cold calls and it's on me. And I called, probably correct, given that. We will be three-way, my hand is connected as well, so yeah. Flop looks okay, so I'm looking to get it in. Hoping still to fold out maybe even some kings and other stuff with a lot of equity. Aces could fold on this board, that would be a huge. Um, yeah, huge thing for us. Unfortunately, he does not folding yet and on the turn he dongs all-in for half pot left. I mean, we just need twenty-five percent, so I called. And he had ace, king only. So what was our equity on the turn? Guess this was, if I knew his hand, this was a very easy call. Yeah, I mean, thirty-five percent could have even called a pot size bet. But yeah, this is just results-oriented, he could have had a better hand too. Although when he just calls flop, he often is not that strong. I think this probably was a mistake. I guess folding is the way to go on the turn, on the flop. Against the pot size bet. What is the flop equity? Okay, his hand does well against mine, but yeah. He could be drawing that or almost drawing that already. If I have like kings, five, sixes, king, six is also not doing that well against, so. Or ace, king, but also club draw. So yeah, I think this probably, if he checks, uh, fold. I mean, there's even another guy behind him, so yeah. I guess that's pretty clear that this should be folded. Yeah, once he calls, he's also committed when he goes all-in, so yeah, that's stupid of him. I mean, I think it's even better if he just bets for himself, if he's not folding anyways, so. Uh, but yeah, let's look into this from a GTO perspective. From a GTO perspective, we can just do. Um, what is it called? A heads up pot, but yeah, still interesting spot. So let's see if we got a board that matches this one and we got one. So let's first figure out what ace, king, ten, nine was going, was this hand? So. Top pair flush blocker, I think not, so yeah, his hand should be checking. Most likely, um, what is should my hand do? Queen, queen, nine, eight. Wow. Even with a flush draw, I'm supposed to check back. That's unexpected. So we cannot analyze this board from a GTO perspective unless. Um, the PLO trainer. Has different results for this. Situation and we can look into it. Well, so let's first look into king. Ace, king, ten, nine, this hand, ace, king, ten, nine. Yeah, it's betting some, checking some, so. Uh, let's see if my hand is supposed to check back always as well. Okay. This thing allows for. Very small amount of bets, but yeah, good, good to know that these type of hands should check back, I mean, it. Probably makes sense because if we get check raised, we are in a very, very tough spot. Yeah, especially, um, because a previous aggressive will have a lot of ace high flush draws and yeah. But we were probably still pressed in, um, checking back and keeping his range right, um, it's probably the best play, I mean. We even have marginal short on value and we love to see free cards, so yeah. Should have done that in hindsight in the three report as well, but yep. Can't change my line of play anymore, um, so this is not happening here, um. He is, we can only bet half pot, so. Let's say it's called and then the sim is over, but that's unfortunate, we cannot look into the turn, so, um. What if we make this seven, nine, okay, are we allowed to bet this? No. Hmm. Seven, eight. No pair, high flush draw, men straight draw. So we are allowed, so we have to make our hand a bit better in order. To. Be allowed, uh, to bet some, so. Let's now figure out what to do on the turn, um, keep in mind that these. Pot stack ratios are completely different, here it is half pot and here it is one point five X, so. Uh, yeah, he, there should be almost no dunking from him and we should continue to bet, uh. And if he. Does this, we should hundred percent call. Yeah, I mean, this is basically the old situation, but we are already all in. So yeah, I mean, this didn't help us very much as, yeah, this brought no, um. Additional informations in an air situation, also it's different than the one we had in hand. But yeah, I think still how I played this, it was fine, I mean, they checked to me, um. I should have some full equity, I assume that even ace, ace should fold. Um, on this board. But yeah, if he's calling ace, king, ten, nine, he probably also calls ace, ace, um. But yeah, this is a mistake, my eyes, I mean, there's one more guy behind who could also have a hand, so yeah. This was definitely not good from him. So moving on, um. That's a sick one, um, this is also not solvable with GTO, yes. Has no three-way pots and also no deep spots available in there. Um, so it is eight hearts, check, diamonds, four spades, so it's not that draw heavy. What is it? Um, three bet, uh, so he raises, he three bets, I four bet and both call, something like that. Well, the pot is. Too big though, I think. So I raise. He re-raise, he call calls, yeah, probably like that, um. I four bet, something like this. Yeah, um. So my hand is ace, spades, queen hearts, five hearts. Ace clubs. Hmm, he was three betting in the first place, so he has like three percent to. Is this guy in it? Uh, not sure, so let's make it like this. Because he was not five betting and the other guy, he's also very loose, I'm not sure why he has a wreck. Um, the color, although his stats are very messed up, so let's. What do we put in, in for him? So something like that. Hmm, okay. So if we look in the complete range, we do well. Against the complete range we put in for them, but what if we, we make this a bit tighter? Hmm, that's also, let's make it like. Plus at least singles suited, so. Uh, that's also another one like. Dollar, one gap. Double suited. Yeah, so some speculative stuff in there, so. Pocket, what is? I'm not sure how to do two pocket pairs, uh. I always forgot, um, what the second letter is. Order to make this sure. Is this working? I hope so, let's just try. Yeah, it's not changing much, so yeah, I guess. Just potting and hoping that nobody has anything is okay. And that's what I did, so yeah, well played, I guess. Okay, last hand. Um, this is again something for the solver. Uh. Probably not a good sizing I choose. Uh, but let's see, um, so we go back, 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 and we just, we need to change the board, it's rainbow. Queen, six, seven. So we check very often and if we have ten, ten, queen, eight. When we bet the. Backdoor flush draw, gut shot. We got two backdoor flush draws and a gut shot, when we should pot. Probably pot and not folding anymore. Is this right? Yep. Yeah, I think my sizing sucks, uh, because he can peel very light and yeah. Although that's actually not too bad with this hand because we can just continue. When the heart comes, when the spade comes. Hmm, what else can we continue? Uh, is there any way we can utilize our block blockers? Not really, I mean, if an eight comes. And then we have two pair. We block the nut straight and if a nine comes, when we have a straight. If a five comes, it's not helping any much, so yeah, no way to utilize our blockers really, so yeah. So yeah, uh. Sorry, but this session was only that short, um. The one before was way longer, but I had to go, but their hands were not quite finished then, so. I promised to come back and do the missing hands later and that's what I did now, um, yeah, thanks for watching, um. Turn it again when I stream the next time, I stream almost every day and yeah. You can learn a lot about task boards and PLO and how to solve them with. Equity tools like provocatory tools or GT, or, um, GTO tools like PLO Vision or PLO Trainer. Yeah, I wish you good luck at the tables, bye.